City Council Workshop, today is Tuesday, March the 14th, 2023. It is 9:00 AM and we are in the community wing of City Hall. So with that, would you all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask the clerk to call the roll, please?
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Carly Pontieri.
Present.
Councilmember Hyder.
Present.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is going to be public participation. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the Communications and Marketing Director with her hand up in the back of the room, Ms. Kershaw. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. This portion of the public comment should focus on matters not on the agenda. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Be concise and to the point. Avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. So with those instructions said, are there any members of the public that would like to make public comment at this time? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, hi. My name is Chantal Poninger. And there was the question about should we pray before a meeting? And here's what I have to say. God honors those who honor Him. Invoking His presence and asking for His wisdom before a meeting can only help you make right decisions. That being said, if you include Him, do it right. Pray the Almighty God, not fake gods, as God can't be mocked, and then take decisions for the city that honors Him. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the... Yes, sir.
My name is Edward Shaw, and I would like to address the educational. Is there any plans of having any drag shows in our schools? Or would they be outlawed?
That's your question?
Yes.
So the city manager will address each speaker's questions at the end of the... at the end of public participation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, yes, sir.
Dave Flynn, 21 Fordham Lane, Palm Coast. My issue is I hear a lot of talk about Florida Park and all the congestion on the road and things to do with that. I would strongly suggest you fix Old Kings. That would alleviate any problems on Florida Park, and there's actually room to expand to make that traffic less of a problem there. So I wouldn't begin to touch Florida Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Stone, Seminole Drive. About two years ago, when you first came into office, there was a gentleman who talked about having better security when people run to and for office. People of the city never get an answer when we approach questions. And I get it, you follow the Queensbury Rule, which was established in England, but we never get answers. Never. Also, just so you know, Ormond Beach, and this was just in the papers, they are now going to expand with safety devices throughout the city. It's been a very successful program for them. It's decreasing accidents, it's decreasing deaths, and once again, the people of Palm Coast are confused why your engineering department does not reach out to other cities to get the answers. That's it?
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like... Yes, sir.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I'd like to speak a little bit from the heart today. Residents trust the city council to work in their best interests. City council trusts residents to give them the facts about what their community is like. And that's a... it's a two-way trust street. When a resident keeps coming back and forth for a long time with the same problem and it's not being resolved, that trust dissolves each time they have to keep coming here. And what I have experienced is more people outside of a residential community has more to say about your residential community than you that live there. And that really presents a problem. Residents can come and tell you there's excessive speeding on my road, and you'll send the sheriff's department out there a few times and maybe get some tickets, maybe it's not. But the speeding continues. So has the city heard you? And then you can have the other people say, well, they haven't complained in a long time. Well, has the complaint been withdrawn? You know? Has it been resolved or has it been withdrawn? But to the... to the city, because it's not being said anymore, it has disappeared. You know? So where do residents go to get trust when we can't see trust? We can't experience trust. The gentleman talked about Florida Park Drive. Yes, it is a horrible problem. Which people on the committee or on the city council would want 9,000 cars a day 60 feet from their homes? I don't think any of you would say, well, we wouldn't. Why did you move there? Well, when I moved there, it wasn't that problem. It's that problem now. So I'm the guy that says, well, move if you don't like it. Create your own financial problem and move. Well, that's not right. The city could and can control the traffic if they want to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public like to address city council at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close this section of public comment and defer to city manager. I think there were a couple of questions that you could highlight for us if you would.
Yes, mayor, thank you. So the question regarding education and plans for drag shows, I do not know that answer. That would be an appropriate question for the Flagler school system. And the second question that I'd like to bring attention to is Mr. Stone. Mr. Stone, we actually have a meeting set up with you in the very near future to talk about some of the concerns that you have and express to you some updates that we can communicate and hopefully you would share with your community.
Thank you. And city council members, if you want to weigh in?
I would also just add the Old Kings widening project, how it's a phase project. And each phase goes through the FDOT's five-year strategic action plan, and the next phase is potentially on that five-year FDOT plan. So that's how Old Kings is phased out.
Thank you, councilman. Anybody else? Very good. All right, with that, I will close, before I close public comment, make sure those that spoke or those that did not speak today, if there is a question lingering, please fill out the comment card. That becomes part of our diary of resident communication so that we can follow up. So it is important to us that we have a way to contact you. Thank you. So I'll close public comment, and we will move on to item E on the agenda, which would be appointments. So I'm going to ask the... Virginia, the clerk, has an update for us.
Morning, Mayor, City Council. PLDRB has an opening that you appointed Christopher Gabriel to last year, and he has resigned from PLDRB.
Let's just share the acronym with the community. So PLDRB?
Yes, it's the Planning Land Development Regulation Board.
And may I ask you while you're there, sorry to interrupt you, just give us a one-sentence description of what that board does.
So the planning board will take action on items that come before them with regards to development throughout the city of Palm Coast. Some of those items will then come to city council for approval. A lot of those are development of regional impact, master plan development, rezoning, items along that line with respects to how our city is going to look to the future to grow and grow planning-wise, not to just approve things for the matter.
Thank you.
Okay, so last year, city council started an interview process. So today, we have before you the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board to interview two applicants. We were also going to bring the Beautification Environmental Advisory Committee today as well, but the applicants were unavailable. So today is just the appointment to the planning board. So in the process, we will ask, we'll interview the candidates in alphabetical order. They'll give you up to three minutes of a review of why they would like to be on the planning board and what they can offer, and then we can follow that up with a question and answer session. The applicant that is not being interviewed, I will be in a different room with them so that the process remains fair. The appointment had to be from District 3 candidates because the code says it shall be appointed within a district. It's not a may, it's a shall. So that's why there are only applicants from District 3 that are being presented to you. There were two other candidates that applied, but they were not residing in District 3. So with that, your first candidate is David Ferguson. If you would come to the podium. And I will take Mr. Stansel and bring him back.
Good morning, Mr. Ferguson.
Good morning, mayor.
Thank you for your application.
Good morning, council.
And we'll offer three minutes for you to tell us all about yourself.
Three minutes, it might be hard. Good morning, council. Good morning, Denise, city manager. Some familiar faces. I must say that things have changed a little bit in the last 10 years or so. I assume you read my bio, my resume. I won't bore you with my life story. I've been a businessman for 40 years. I did some good things, made some mistakes, and learned to live to talk about them. I'm 71, and when I was appointed to the city council in 2012, they wrote about me because no one knew who I was. I was new to the area, and they said, another old white man appointed to the city council. So it's nice to see more female-centric leaders in the community. Why am I interested in this process? I talked to a few people, and one person asked if I had a mental examination recently. So I really don't know what I'm up against here in terms of the land development code and the comprehensive plan and so on and so forth. I've kept track of what's been going on in this community for a long time. I've been involved in Flagler County since 2003, when I bought a piece of property. And I moved from Jacksonville. I was there 29 years. I saw what Jacksonville was when I moved there in 83, and what it is today, it's totally different place. So I have a pretty good feel for how communities evolve and with the good, the bad, and the ugly. I moved from Jacksonville because it was too hectic for an old fella. And I have four children up there, married with nine grandchildren, so we're always up there. But any event, why do I want this position? I think that the future of Palm Coast is being charted as we speak and has been for recent years. And the mayor is big on the northwest quadrant as the new vista, the new frontier for development. And that kind of spurred me into thinking, yeah, I think it could make a big difference if it's done properly. The thing that concerns me the most about wanting to be involved is I'm a senior, I'm retired. I hear a lot about traffic. I hear about the quality of life being compromised, and yet the builders are coming. No one's stopping them. I don't want to stop them, I don't believe, unless it's a reason to stop them. But I think the balance between the why people moved here 40, 50 years ago has to be maintained with all the development that's going around. I have a lot more to say and offer, but three minutes is a tough, tough chore. But thank you very much for the consideration.
I appreciate your comments, and I think you left one thing out, just so everybody understands. If I'm not mistaken, your name appears on the wall as you enter City Hall.
Yeah, that was part and parcel of the big challenge when I was up in your seat, was whether or not to build a city hall. And that legacy is something I'm very proud of.
Thank you.
Anyhow, thank you.
While you're here, I'm going to ask if city council members have any questions for the applicant at this time?
No questions.
I have no questions. I just want to thank you for coming out and stepping up.
Yeah, thank you.
Likewise, yeah. I think...
Okay.
Questions, but thank you, and thank you for your prior services.
Thank you.
You're off the hook. Thank you.
Where do I go to hide now? That's part of the test, right? Where they go?
Navigating City Hall.
Exactly right. It's a maze, a little Rude Goldberg.
Good morning, and thank you for applying. Please, please go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, and council members. I moved here a couple of years ago.
Do me a favor, just to introduce yourself by name, just so we have it on the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Mark Stansel. I live in Section, District 3, over in Seminole Woods. I've been here two years, and I've... One of the things that attracted me to come here was this is such a beautiful city. And I'm concerned, I want to make sure it stays that way. And this, I thought this was an opportunity to help guide it in that way, you know, because it's going to grow. The city's going to grow, and we need people to learn how to manage how it grows, to keep it, this beautiful city. You know, I don't have a lot of experience in this particular field as we speak, but I was in the military, I was tasked by the postal group commander of Europe to consolidate the logistics and administration of three postal units into one between Geeson, Frankfurt, and Hanau. And it seemed like nobody knew how to do that except me. So I was really proud, but it took a while. But, you know, dealing with the postmaster in New York, I accomplished everything. And I actually got an award for it, but, you know, which made me happy. But it's the vision to be able to see the future, the vision to see where you're going and how to make it happen. And I've always, in my military career and in my postal career, I've always made it happen because I see what's going on. I listen to people, and I work with other people, and we make things happen in a good manner. So I'm really proud. And another thing that really makes me concerned is attracting young people to stay here and live here. They have to have affordable housing, and we have to be able to manage what goes up. You know, the apartments are low-cost houses. You know, if we could get a builder to build some like two-bedroom houses for the young people, because there's a lot of medical people here, young kids, we want them to stay, and we want to attract more people to come here. So that's very important to me because this is my home. So that's why I'm here. I want to help.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and obviously, we all thank you for your service. But let me ask our city council, my fellow city council members, do you have any questions for the gentleman?
Thank you for your service. Thank you for showing up today. I understand your background and appreciate it. No questions.
I have no questions, but I will echo the gratitude for your service. Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you so much for your service.
Thank you for your service. I would also ask, what was the most difficult logistics challenge that you encountered while you were consolidating the multiple postal operations? That seems pretty fascinating. I'd love to hear.
Well, the hardest part was, okay, we have, the post office uses meter machines to... that prints out postage, and all letters are canceled with the same... Like here, we have zip codes. Over in Europe, we have APO numbers. So we had to get through, and that's how I worked with the postmaster in New York specifically, was to find a way to have all the mail from Geeson, Hanau, and Frankfurt, all, because there are three locations, geographical locations, but with the same zip code, but they had different APO numbers. That was the hardest part, and, you know, we worked it out.
Excellent. Thank you for your service.
And just to finish up, I thank you again and applaud your comments regarding the... our need to attract a younger resident in the future, again, while protecting all of our, all of us older folks. It's vitally important that we balance our community with both our aging community. For those that don't know, our community is continuing to age and mature. The last census increased our age by several years, so we are trending older, not younger. So I thank you for your comment and agree with you that building a future for the next several generations is incredibly important to our future as a sustainable and a successful city. So I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, Ms. Virginia, how do we proceed now?
So next week, the appointment will be on your agenda, so you can make a selection for a PLDRB member.
Very good. I wish both, I thank, I thank each of the applicants again for their comments and their participation. I wish you both the best, and we will render a decision at the next meeting according to the clerk. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to agenda item F, which is presentations. And we have first a presentation regarding parks and recreation fee structure, background, and future analysis discussion. So please proceed when you're ready.
Good morning, mayor and city council. James Urs, Parks and Rec Director.
And Brittany McDermott, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation.
So today's presentation is the Parks and Recreation Fee Structure, and what we are concentrating on today is more of our Palm Coast Aquatic Center and the new Southern Recreation Center. Throughout the presentation, we will be presenting market research with comparable facilities. We would also be presenting community input and surveys and what we put out to the public. And then we also will have comparable facility, proposed facility rates for each of the facilities. So we will go ahead and get started with the Palm Coast Aquatic Center, and then Brittany will take over the pool, and then I will finish this off with the Southern Rec Center.
If I could just ask you, James, this review is a requirement, is my understanding?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and it's an ordinance, I guess? How often are we required to do this?
It's more of a resolution.
Resolution?
We, last time we did this, I believe it was about two years ago. So just, we try and evaluate our fees, especially for our membership fees and our daily fees on a, every couple of years, just to see if we're within market, then if we would, then we would bring these to council.
Keep us in compliance with our resolution as well?
Correct.
Very good. Please proceed.
Okay, and then Brittany will go ahead and get started.
So as James mentioned, we'll start off with the Aquatic Center. As you know, city council did establish an initiative to return the Aquatic Center to a year-round facility. So with that, it was important for us to go back and look at our fee structure and make sure it is in line with a year-round operation. We started off with a market analysis and looked at some comparable facilities. Of course, we looked to our neighbor, Beltar Swim and Racket, but we also included Winter Park and Green Cove, which are other municipal-run pools that are year-round operations. The reason you're seeing a range of fees on Winter Park is because they do have both a non-resident and resident fee structure. And also, you'll notice on the last column, the twilight hours, we do currently offer this at our Aquatic Center. It's half off admission two hours prior to closing. You'll notice this is not something that's typically offered through our market analysis. So I just wanted to jump ahead to our proposed fees for the daily rates. Looking at our market analysis, we feel comfortable with where our daily admission fees are currently and keeping those consistent. But looking at that twilight fee, we are recommending to remove that just because it is not in line with our market analysis. And also, we did more of a deep dive into our admission numbers, and we find that this is a small fraction of what our admission is throughout the year. So we feel pretty comfortable recommending to remove that twilight fee. So jumping back to our market analysis, but this time looking at membership fees, we looked at those same facilities. We do currently offer monthly, quarterly, and seasonal pass options when we were a seasonal facility. So we tried to model this chart with those comparable passes, like the Winter Park six-month pass is sort of equivalent to our seasonal pass, for example. So something we have seen, there are monthly payment options through Beltar Swim and Racket, so we would like to continue with that. And then looking at Green Cove Springs, we really liked that they offer a true summer pass. That is something that we would like to provide at our facility. As I'm sure you're well aware, that's a peak season for us at the pool. We have very heavy utilization in the summer, and we do get a lot of families requesting a pass just for that time range, especially with grandkids visiting and family members coming to town. We do like that option as well. So looking at our proposed passholder fees, we are looking to maintain the monthly payment option, similar to Beltar Swim and Racket, and also, we are looking to implement that summer family pass. Other than that, we are looking to simplify and streamline our passholder options. You'll notice previously, we did offer a limited family option that wasn't utilized as much as we previously thought, and then looking back at that market analysis, it's just not something that's typically offered. So we're just looking to simplify those passholder options and be more in line with what we're finding through our analysis. So these are our recommendations for the passholder fees. So next, we will jump into, we did some resident surveys. This went out to current passholders through online type form, but it was also available as a printed paper copy right there at the pool, so we could capture the daily admission as well, and they had an opportunity to complete that survey. And it was then manually input and put with the data of the type form survey. So through that, we had about 78 responses, and we did start off with some questions that geared more towards the hours because we were first, you know, establishing as a year-round facility. We wanted to make sure we were meeting the expectations of the community. So these first questions do go over the hours, and we made sure to model our hours of operation off of the responses we were getting directly from the public. And then this was just another question on the hours, the days per week that they anticipated swimming. So this goes to that twilight fee that we are recommending to remove. You can see the majority of respondents did agree and support that decision to remove the twilight fee. And then we did more of a dive into each individual passholder rate that we recommended that we just presented to you, and you can see again, the majority are in support of the changes that we are recommending. You will notice that first option does speak to a military and first responder fee that has overwhelming positive support. However, as you're aware, Parks and Rec does run multiple facilities. So before we establish a structure like that solely at the Aquatic Center, we want to make sure we step back and look at all of our facilities. They each meet different audiences and have different fee structures. They each meet different audiences and have different fee structures and we want to make sure we're really doing a comprehensive analysis of a fee like that and could bring that back to you at a later time, looking at all of our facilities and how we could possibly implement that across the board. So just wanted to make sure we, we spoke to that since it was included in the survey. And with that, that does conclude the Aquatic Center portion, so before I kick it back over to James to take us through Southern Rec Center, are there any questions that I can answer?
Yeah, I, I would like to ask a question. The, uh, the polling that you did, um, who was that sent out to?
Uh, through the type form survey, yeah, so that went out to current pool passholders. We have a distribution list that that got sent directly and then we had the printed copies available, um, there at the facility. So as you came in, we were promoting that there was a survey to speak on hours and fees.
So my question is, so we're polling, uh, current users?
Correct.
So, um, I think City Council would love to find a way, uh, I speak for myself now, um, to find, to, to encourage more residents who may not be current users of the facility to enjoy our amenities. So going forward, I'd like you to consider ways to attract them and it, not to create a nightmare here, but maybe there's a, a trial membership possibility, if it's not too burdensome, to get people to come and try it, because if, if they try it, they'll like it. I think I heard that somewhere before. Um, but the amenities are, I mean, it's, it's incredible that we're able to offer that, so love to see you figure out some kind of a promotional routine, which doesn't affect these numbers today, but are a spin-off so that you have a bigger pool of, of, of people to poll in the coming years.
No pun intended.
No. I do my best.
Nick's on a roll today.
Tell you that, like butter.
Um, I was going to mention the trial membership, but I'm glad the mayor did because I think that's an excellent idea, um, to get people to come and see what we have to offer. I assume our expenses are going up at that pool, correct?
Uh, yeah, correct.
I mean, chlorine, everything, chemicals, the whole nine yards, no doubt.
Yes, and with year-round operations too.
Yeah, so we do need to, um, increase our fees, but provide a great service.
Yeah, just talking in regards to the trial membership, we have, uh, done this for programs where it would be a free program, uh, when we wanted to get Aqua Zumba off the ground a couple of years ago, there was a free program available and people would come in, uh, utilize that, that free program and then hopefully they would have signed up and it actually has proved pretty popular.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselperson, Pontieri?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Um, have you all done a projection on the increased fees, the income that that'll bring in, making sure that with us operating now year-round, it, that will provide sufficient funding to continue at the same level of service with these new fees?
We, we, uh, each, each year we do a projection. So last year, the pool, uh, generated a revenue of around $87,000. With these current fees, uh, we have not really done a projection. We are projected in our budget to hit, I think, I believe it's 70,000 this year, um, with our, as our goal, uh, and we would look to probably project a little bit more when we, when we go through our budget process, yes.
Yeah, just for the purposes of being able to budget and make sure we can continue on with that level of service, I would like to see some type of projection based on this new fee structure. And then I also was curious, um, because there are a lot of people in our community who might not be able to afford even something that seems not to be overwhelming, but do we have current scholarship programs for any of those who might be underprivileged and might not be able to afford this?
Yeah, so we do offer a scholarship fund through our summer camp program and swim lessons are included in that as well. We are getting ready to put that application out. I believe it may have just gone out, um, this week with that registration looking to open at the end of the month. So we do provide that opportunity. And I just wanted to speak on, um, the cost recovery that is a KPI with our department that we are always looking at our expenditures versus our revenue and ensuring that we're in line with those percentages and always enhancing and making sure that we can improve on that.
Awesome. Yeah, I just would like to see it, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Before we, you know, before we approve anything, because obviously that's a big issue, especially as we go into talking about our strategic action plan and our priorities. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, we'd be happy to provide that.
Um, I have, um, somewhat of the same concern as Councilwoman Pontieri regarding the size of families that might want to attend the pool and the facilities. Are your fees the same regardless of the size of the family?
Uh, yes, they are.
Do you think that, um, based on incomes and the size of the family, that they might consider readjusting the fees based, because, because some of these families may not be able to afford the same fees as a family that might have two people and they have seven people?
Yeah.
So I think that we should take that into consideration also.
Okay, definitely.
I would appreciate the comment. I, I would ask them all to check with, uh, through the city manager and city council to make sure that we are, um, we can kind of get that kind of information. I don't want to step over a line of, of personal or confidential information. I, I, I understand your point and it's well-taken, but they'll have to be careful about how you would assess.
Yeah.
That need. So just, you'll, you'll work through the process correctly, okay?
Yep.
And we do have a model to look at with that as well, through our CDPG, um, Scholarship Fund. There are a lot of parameters that we follow as far as family size and household income through tax statements or through the, um, Free and Reduced Lunch Program through the schools. So we have some of that available to look to and model.
Councilman?
Um, excellent. Thank you for this portion of the presentation. Um, I think the projections are great. Another piece of data that I would like to see, and I think it would be potentially valuable for us, is the composition of our user base, whether or not they're new users or recurring users. I think it's always a good idea to see if, you know, our outreach programs are being effective, because these are such great facilities and amenities. I would just like to see the turnover rate of who exactly we're attracting, and I think, uh, we do a phenomenal job at the, um, at the pool right now. We had a couple of events last year I attended, they were awesome, always, uh, well-attended. I would also say, it's a great idea to have the last few hours of the day for free, and I think that's a great way, that if we have people who can't potentially use the pool at other, uh, you know, times during the day because of whatever issues, um, having the last few hours of the pool is a great way to kind of open up to everyone in the community. And also, uh, if these people haven't used a facility before, it's a great way to get people over there for the last couple of times, uh, you know, a couple of hours of the day to dip a toe in the pool. Pun intended.
Very good. I thank, uh, council for their comments and I would just, uh, add to that, your staff at the pool are exceptional. They are hands-on, they are engaged, they are professional, and they make everyone that visits the pool comfortable with an eye on safety literally every minute that someone is at the facility. So please, uh, thank them for us on the effort they make. And you have additional presentation now?
Yeah, we'll, uh, head into the Southern Recreation Center. So thank you for those comments, by the way. I'm sure they're listening, so they would really appreciate that. Uh, so just before we get into our, uh, comparable facilities and our proposed rates, kind of want to give a quick snapshot of some of the programs that we will be, uh, having at the Southern Rec Center. Uh, so we'll continue to expand with our current tennis programs. George, our tennis supervisor, he has done a great job of reevaluating our tennis programs and we have seen a spike in attendance for those. So he has done a great job and we would continue with those current tennis programs. Uh, for pickleball, uh, we would look to bring beginner, intermediate, and advanced programs for both the youth and the adults. Uh, we, we would love to expand our adaptive programming. Due to the weather, we couldn't host it, but at the USTA event, we were going to have wheelchair tennis and that would have been really great to see. Uh, so we are looking to bring in special needs, wheelchair tennis, and pickleball. And then also, we already hosted Special Olympics at the tennis center, but we would also include them in pickleball as well. Uh, we currently do our ladder leagues at Holland and we would look to bring ladder leagues to the Rec Center as well, along with our round robins. They've been pretty effective in our tennis section and we would bring round robins for the pickleball. Obviously, we would be doing private and group lessons and then open and drop-in play. So these are just a couple of programs we would be looking to include.
Before you change the slide, go back. Okay. So I'm familiar with landscape portraits and, um, um, vertical portraits, so what view is that of, uh, my fellow council member there?
James as well.
Both of you.
Uh, just had to put that in there, you know?
The best teammate I could ask for. He's, uh, really, I'm surprised that he can even sit there with the weight of our team on his shoulders.
Councilman, if you could just keep your feet on the ground and be well-grounded, I'd be good.
Hopefully my head can get through the door at the end of this presentation.
Go ahead. Please proceed. Thank you.
Sorry. Uh, so we looked, uh, during design and, uh, we went, where we went ahead, the Parks and Recreation Department did community input meetings at the community center and we did three separate meetings. We did one for tennis, one for pickleball, and then the third one was more of an open discussion, uh, for those who couldn't make the first two. So these were kind of snapshots and some highlights of what we, feedback we received from our residents. Uh, so on January 13th, we had the tennis and they would look to have more locker rooms, uh, expand our pro shop, and then expand our hours of current operations. On January 20th, we had the pickleball discussion, uh, and what we got from that was dedicated pickleball courts, open social play, covered courts, and then competitive pricing for memberships. And then during our open discussion, we got social and inviting experience and then exciting programs and events. When we did our research for comparable facilities, uh, we looked pretty much in Florida, uh, for those facilities that are within, in Florida. Uh, and then they also were facilities that were kind of going to be like the Southern Rec Center where they would have pickleball courts and then also clay tennis courts, for the exception of Pictona, uh, just due to its vicinity to, uh, Palm Coast. Uh, so we looked at each of these for, and we looked at hours, we looked at rates, and what we noticed is, is that most of these facilities have one kind of membership rate. And then after listening to our residents through our community input meetings, we decided, and we'll see this on the next slide for our proposed facility rates, we decided to kind of split them up into three categories. So one would be pickleball, one would be tennis, and then a combination membership. Uh, so we'll head into those, oh, any questions on the comparable facilities or?
Why were those, uh, um, facilities chosen? How did you pick?
Uh, they were within Florida, and, but they also had, uh, outdoor pickleball courts and also clay tennis courts like we do, that our current.
You didn't find anybody closer to home here within our region?
No. No. Pictona was just our closest one with both amenities.
Did you happen to look at, uh, Deltona by chance?
Deltona.
Only because I'm looking at populations that would be similar.
I think we did. I have the, we have an expanded list, but.
I can make it to Pictona in 25 minutes, from point to point.
Uh, Deltona was, uh, not on our list, but.
Okay.
We did do Delray.
Okay, very good.
Also, just for note, uh, Pictona had a big tournament this weekend too. There was something like 1,100 registered players. Huge turnout for pickleball down there.
So these are the proposed facility rates we would like, uh, to bring to council. Uh, as you could see, we categorized them into three separate membership rates. Uh, you notice tennis will, has stayed the same to what it currently is. Uh, we have seen a lot of success with those, with these current rates. Uh, they are a little bit high just due to the maintenance of the courts, so they do require grooming twice a day, irrigation, pretty, on a daily basis, and then depending on the season, could be twice, three times a day, depending on how dry it really gets. Uh, it does take a lot of staff time to keep those courts in pristine conditions, especially during the tournament. Uh, staff work really hard and our volunteers work really hard to give, give the players the best courts as possible. And that was really one of our, uh, the players, when they worked, when we got our after-action report, was the quality of our courts was a good draw for our players that came to the tournament. Uh, we're looking at pickleball, so each, we kind of mirrored tennis within each of our pickleball and combination. Uh, so we looked at single annual at 250. Uh, I don't think I'll go through all this, and then we looked at our single combination at 650. So you can have a chance to have tennis and pickleball. Uh, and then.
Hey, James?
Yes?
Just, can you go back to that?
Yep.
Couple of quick questions.
Yep.
What's a junior? Just define.
Uh, under 18.
Under 18?
School age, under 18.
And a limited monthly, what does that mean?
Limited monthly, uh, is that they can, might have to help me with this on.
Nights and weekends?
Nights and weekends, yeah, sorry.
Nights and weekends?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Uh, so the Southern Recreation Center, not only will get new pickleball courts, but we'll also have the clubhouse. And the clubhouse will have two community rooms within the, in the facility and looking at the design, they are about, around the same size as our room at the community center 114. I'm sure everyone's familiar with 114, the small, kind of the smallest classroom there. So these, the community center's been very successful and that room has been quite successful with rentals as well. So we thought we would mirror our new rooms to, with the community center room at, at the community center room. Uh, so each of these hourly charges, uh, for-profit and nonprofit during business hours and after hours, uh, so we just mirrored those same, that, that same rate for that.
And I just wanted to mention too, the community center was one of the, um, facilities that we did evaluate just under two years ago, so we've already done a comprehensive market analysis and everything, and that's why we feel comfortable modeling those fees and feeling that they're in line.
Uh, and then just before we get to any questions, uh, just kind of looking into the future, uh, we will, April 25th, Parks and Recreation is coming to present on the budget for the next fiscal year and the Southern Rec Center will be a major part of that discussion and we will kind of outline our operations and requests through that way.
James, I, I have two questions for you. First, help me understand the, the delta between the cost of, uh, membership for pickleball versus tennis?
Uh, so tennis, oops, sorry. So tennis is, it is a lot more maintenance on the courts and that's where we're kind of determining our prices. We did determine our pickleball prices through resident feedback as well. Uh, you want to, pickleball, pickleball residents weren't, weren't going to pay $550 to utilize the courts. So we, we looked at Pictona and we looked at our different facilities and we, we decided our number to kind of be around that, those facilities and what residents have provided us through feedback.
So is it common throughout the, the study that you did, that there's a big difference between the cost of pickleball and the cost of tennis?
Uh, each facility, actually, when we did research, I had one membership for the entire facility.
Just one for everything?
Yes, and so with our community.
So you had to, you had to pay in to, to both, okay?
Yes, and with the feedback we received, we decided to split those up.
Okay, then let me just ask my second question, open up. Um, so I've been out in the, in the community, uh, attended events and there's a very strong, um, engagement, uh, from the pickleball players, but also from the tennis players. There's, there's been a feeling that perhaps tennis players were concerned that their, um, the value of their membership might be lessened because of pickleball. And I think the pickleball folks felt that their membership may not be given as much value as the tennis players. So my question is, do you feel that this rate structure balances the city's offering? So we're offering the same value to pickleball players as we are to tennis players. It's important that both groups and then future players feel the same way. So balance is what I'm asking.
Um, as a team, we believe so, uh, that it does balance, and that's why we thought the combination fee was a great addition to that, uh, to, to this facility, because it is pretty unique compared to, pretty unique, and I think having the balance of you could play both is a big draw there as well.
Okay, and, and last one is, um, so on, in projects like this, often somebody will come along and offer professionally to give lessons. So what would be your policy and procedure regarding players bringing a professional or a professional going to the facility to charge for lessons? How does that work?
Um, it, that is actually, we do not allow that in.
We don't?
In the facilities, and that's by ordinance as well, and that is on our public courts.
Okay, so if a, a resident wants to, uh, get lessons to improve their game, they would have to go somewhere else?
Uh, no, we will, we plan on cross-training our current tennis instructors as well. Uh, we have, currently on staff, we do have a tennis, uh, sorry, pickleball instructor, JoJo, who you see at the tournaments all the time. He's a Level One certified pickleball instructor. Uh, and then our, we are looking to cross-train with our current tennis instructors.
So we, we offer the resource already for somebody that wants to improve their, their play. Excellent. Thank you. Sorry, guys. Gals.
I have nothing on it. Thank you.
All my questions.
All my questions are, well, not all of them, but thank you for your presentation. You answered a lot of them that I had preemptively. Most of the others are surrounded regarding the budget, so I'll hold off until your presentation then. Thank you.
No further questions?
Nope. Thank you for the presentation. I would also just, for context, the quality of courts that we had during the ATP event were phenomenal. And they're hydro courts, so they're hydrated from the bottom up. And it also, that goes into the cost of maintenance for the facility of pickleball versus tennis, and that's kind of also where the disparity between pickleballers not wanting to pay as much, because they're just basically hard courts that don't require as much maintenance comparatively. I just wanted to put that out there, but tremendous facility, it's going to only get better. And I know that the user base there, everybody kind of slowly transitions towards pickleball one way or the other, so I think we should all be able to get along out there.
Very good. Thank you very much for your presentation.
No worries.
Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you.
We move on now to item G, which is a resolution approving the city council meeting invocation policy, which I think was brought up by Vice Mayor Danko and Councilperson Pontieri had heralded our discussion on this.
I figure this position is better, so you don't have to.
I appreciate that, counselor.
So first, I'm just going to do my normal job of reading this proposed resolution into the record. This is a resolution, the city council meeting invocation policy, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, adopting the city of Palm Coast meeting invocation policy, authorizing the city manager to take certain actions to implement the policy, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. So as, you're correct, mayor, I was asked to prepare a potential proposed invocation policy for the city council to use in, for their regular meetings. And I have done that based on the best practices for these types of policies. There is a number of, there's a lot of case law out there, many cases regarding invocation prayer at public meetings. And that is really rooted in the U.S. Constitution and the Establishment Clause. So if I could just give a little historical background, the Establishment Clause is the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. It prohibits the government, well, the provision of the First Amendment that we're, that we're concerned with today is the prohibition on the government from making any law that respects an establishment of religion. This clause not only forbids governments from establishing an official religion, but also prohibits government actions that may unduly favor one religion over another, or from unduly preferring religion over non-religion, or non-religion over religion, the other way around. So many of the cases that have been brought, challenging invocation or prayer policies have been under, have been through a challenge that doesn't meet the Establishment Clause. So the following are a list of cases that establish that you can have a practice of opening your meetings with a prayer or invocation if certain conditions or provisions are met. So this Marsh versus Chambers case, this case essentially stands for the idea that, it goes back to colonial times, as I've included a quote from the case, but through the founding of, of the republic and ever since, the practice of legislative prayer has coexisted with the principles of disestablishment and religious freedom. So this kind of establishes that yes, you can have a prayer at the beginning of your However, that comes with a number of conditions or provisions that must be followed to make sure that you can comply with the dictate of the Establishment Clause. So numerous courts have approved invocation practices that incorporate a neutral system to invite religious leaders from the local community and volunteers to provide an invocation between public meetings. All the cases listed here have provided insight as to what that neutral policy needs to look like and what it needs to, what it needs to do. Essentially, the biggest, and there are a number of them, but one of the biggest provisions that we should put in our policy is that it, anyone giving an invocation has to prohibit, the, the policy itself should prohibit prophesizing, and it cannot dictate what religion a speaker has, belongs to. And it also cannot dictate the content of the invocation. So in other words, if you open the door to allowing for a prayer or invocation to be given, that door needs to open, be open to everyone, all religions. The city cannot dictate the content of that invocation, but the city can require that there's no prophesizing in the invocation, that the person giving the invocation doesn't bring up social or political matters, or try to get other people to join their religion. It has to be more neutral in content.
A quick question on that.
Sure.
So would that content have to be looked at?
No.
Before a meeting?
No, we're prohibited, actually. There's a case that prohibits us from looking at content. We, we, we have the policy and we'll go through the policy and what it says.
Okay.
But we will not be looking at invocations before they're given.
Are there any examples that you could give of like bad actors about, and I mean bad actors as in like people who use these loopholes for ways to kind of like incite divisiveness? You know what I mean? Because I think we're all looking at it in the best of light, but are there any examples of people who use these more recently in ways to like incite divisiveness? Like someone from like a church of, you know, the devil or something like that, just for instance?
So, you know, I don't know of any specific anecdotal situations that have occurred. I mean, there's case law out there that, for example, there's, there's case law from people who are part of an atheist group saying, well, you've, you, you know, because you've had 24 meetings in the last two years and all the invocation speakers have been Christian-based invocation speakers, your policy is not open. You know, challenges like that. But I don't have any anecdotal situations that I've been involved in. I have another city that has an invocation procedure and they, there, there hasn't been an instance where someone has come in. It's just, they invite everybody from the city and the county to come and speak, and then whoever comes and speaks, you know, follows the parameters of the policy. I haven't seen that, but that's just been in my own experience, not to say that it hasn't happened because it definitely could happen. So the last, I think this is the last piece of case law, and this is regarding the selection process for an invocation speaker. It does not violate the Establishment Clause if it does not advance or disparage any particular faith. So basically, it has to be neutral. The first, and now we're moving into the policy itself. So the purpose of the policy is stated, and this is, there's a little kind of opening that establishes the case law that the policy was based on in the first paragraph of the policy, but this, this, this purpose is all the way at the end, just kind of to drive the point home, is that the policy is not intended and shall not be implemented or constructed in any way to affiliate the city with, nor express the city's preference for any faith or denomination. This policy is intended to acknowledge and express the city's respect for the diversity of religious denominations and faiths represented and practiced among the citizens of Palm Coast. So this is to just show clearly that the city is not trying to put forth one faith or religious belief over another, that we are accepting of all faiths to come in and speak, all faiths that are part of the citizens of Palm Coast. So here are the, this is, these are the provisions that are included in the policy. As we talked about briefly last time, the invocation would only be performed at regularly scheduled business meetings.
So I have a question about that.
Sure.
Is there a legal reason?
No.
So we could change this to all meetings?
Sure. You could say all mean, you know, that it's the difference between the, you know, staff time for, and the number of speakers you have lined up, you know, as opposed to two a month, then you'd be at four sometimes, because we have our SAC workshops and budget workshops as we have four a month sometimes, and then sometimes it's three a month.
So we could, we could do our business meetings and then on our workshops, just do a moment of silence if we chose?
Yep, that's completely, yep, it's completely up to you.
Or we could do all meetings?
Sure. You would want to say all city council meetings, not all, you know, advisory boards, BLDRB, there's a number of meetings that occur. But, but yes, that's, that's a poss, that's a possibility for sure. Invocations are limited to one minute and are only given once per the meeting. And this time period doesn't have to be one minute, that was just a time period that seemed to be standard in other policies that we looked at. Occurs after the pledge, again, that can be moved. I would suggest that it not be moved anywhere where business items are occurring, that it be kept at the beginning of the meeting. That the invocation itself may not be used to advance or disparage any particular religion, faith, belief, political, or social movement. And this is just to make sure that no one's prophesizing, because you can prohibit that per the case law. Must display a respectful attitude towards all peoples, regardless of religion, race, national origin, sex, gender, or ability. So that's just making sure that no one's being disparaging over, into a different class or another class. And then no person in attendance at the meeting is required to participate, and the mayor will provide an opportunity for people to leave the room if they do not want to participate.
So that would mean the mayor would have to say, anyone who doesn't want to participate may leave the room and return? Is that a legal requirement?
That is not necessarily set out. Well, it is a legal requirement that you can't force people to participate.
Right, but do we have to say, if you don't want to listen to this invocation, leave the room?
That's just the best practice. You can leave the room if you'd like. You don't have to participate, you can leave the room if you'd like. They don't have to.
We don't have to.
It's just up to them, right. The invocation must be voluntary, voluntarily delivered, and that's important. You can't be paid to give an invocation. And the way that the policy is written is that the volunteer, it will be voluntary delivered by a local clergy member, religious leader, or community leader, no compensation given. Invocation speakers should be selected from a wide pool on a rotating first come, first served basis and are limited to twice per year.
Twice per year, meaning just two meetings or two months?
Two meetings.
So if we did three meetings, our business meetings and our workshop?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. This is with respect to the speaker itself, so we have a pool of speakers.
Right.
You wouldn't want to have one speaker do all the, do all the meetings. This is just limited toing it to make sure that you get through all the other invocation speakers that have signed up to come.
So if, if we open this up to a pool, first come, first served, and we get 12 religious ministers, rabbis, priests come forward, we could literally say, okay, you're going to do all three meetings for January, then you'll do all three for February. We, we could have them do three meetings.
You, you could, right? You could, but you, it's, it's a, there is no, this, this particular policy, and I probably should point these out as I'm reading them off, limiting it to twice a year is just so that you are not giving the impression that you have, you are promoting one religion itself. So you're just trying to get everybody that's come up, come in a chance to do it.
But I'm still confused about the, when you say twice a year, so say we have Reverend Joe.
Yeah.
Reverend Joe is going to do January, okay?
One meeting in January.
One, Reverend Joe is going to do the month of January. Suppose we break it down like that. Reverend Joe, if we do our workshops, could end up doing it three times?
True. If you were going to do it on a monthly basis rather than a per-meeting basis.
All right, so there's, so we could do that then, right? On a monthly basis?
Yeah, and then depending on how many invocation speakers you have, then Reverend Joe may not, I mean, if you have 24 or something like that, they may not, he may not be able to speak again for another two years or three years, because it's first come, first served basis, so, and it's rotating, so you'd have to go through all the invocation speakers that you had come in and then start at the beginning again and go through.
Oh, okay, all right, so, right. That's fine.
The invocation, the invitation for speakers are, is posted on the city website, so in the policy, there's a draft invitation that it just has language to say that, you know, the Palm, Palm Coast makes the policy to invite members of local community to offer an invocation before the beginning of its regular business meetings. And, and this is just the, this is just a general example of what the invitation on the website would be, and this would just to be let, to let everybody know, another form of reaching out to have, to have congregations come and sign up if they wanted to speak. And then the, the clerk would, in addition to this website posting, the clerk would send out invitations once per year to the congregations that are located within Palm Coast, to invite them to come and sign up if they want to come and speak.
Palm Coast or all of Flagler?
Well, the way it's written now is that it would be within Palm Coast jurisdiction, and then anybody who attends a, hold on, let me just find the provision. It allows for everyone within the city of Palm Coast, all the congregations within the jurisdiction of the city of Palm Coast, the clerk reaches out to them, but then if there's a member of the communities that, a member of the community that goes to a church in Flagler County, they could contact the clerk and sign up to be on the list, too. It just, the reach out by the clerk, you know, the mailings would just come to the congregations with the city of Palm Coast, but that wouldn't preclude a congregation in Flagler County from signing up to speak. It's just for the invitation purposes. And then that the city clerk will make a reasonable effort to update the congregation list annually as requests are received in from those, we have other congregations that want to come and speak. Again, this is a database, or a list will be kept by the city of everybody that has signed up to do an invocation. And this is what I talked about last time in this slide. Persons who reside within the city and who are members of religious congregation outside the city but within Flagler County may, in writing or an email, address the city clerk, request inclusion of their congregation on the congregation list. That is pretty much the end of the policies that are, that are within the invocation policy. If anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Counselor, just a couple of quick questions. Thank you for identifying the fact that Flagler, anyone in Flagler County can apply. You mentioned one of, when you described the, the applicants for giving an invocation, you included the term "community leaders." Could you help me understand what that means?
Sure. So for example, if the Flagler County Sheriff's Office had a chaplain for their sheriff's office, or if there was a chaplain that was, worked for some type of public entity like that, they wouldn't. they wouldn't necessarily have a congregation, but they're a community leader.
Okay.
So they could come in and speak, it's more of a catch-all. It doesn't have to be an included term, that's one of the things that you don't have to have a community leader.
Well, where I'm going is, what, you've used the word, various words, clergy minister, priest, on and on. What are the religious credentials or affiliation required for the clerk to approve? The fact that they are eligible to give an invocation here?
So the way we have it, the way that it's drafted now is that the invocation shall be voluntarily delivered by a local clergy member, religious leader, or community leader and
So what, right there, right there, how do they, how does the clerk confirm that?
Well, then the next part of that, so that's the actual invocation speaker itself, and so the next part of that is that that person hails from a congregation that the clerk has maintained a list of, so the way it's supposed to function is, is that the clerk will put the invitation on the website, will mail out to the churches or the synagogues, whatever, that we know, religious organizations that exist in Palm Coast will mail out the invitation letters to them and they will come back with a speaker. So that's how it's supposed to work, it's supposed to work on a base where we're working from the congregations that were in, were, are within the city of Palm Coast and inviting them and then considering ones from Flagler County if anybody else comes.
So the clerk is responsible for screening those incoming applications, first come, first served, but screening them to make sure that these are folks that are appropriate according to the, the, this, this would become an ordinance? Or a, what would this become, a change in?
A resolution, so it's just like a policy, like your policy and procedures.
And just one, one other quick one for everybody to consider, in the event that whoever is on the list is unable to make it, which is going to happen, are we thinking that we would resort to the moment of silence in those cases? So it would automatically go there, I think that's just?
And if I could make a suggestion, maybe instead of saying "community leader," we say "community religious leader."
Good suggestion, and just to clarify for me, so I've listened to invocations around the community for a lot of years now and there's some really good ones out there that are used regularly by groups that are well within all of the parameters that you suggest, are we able to offer up a neutral invocation that would then be delivered by whoever's on the list or are we going to let them say their own invocation, invocation each time? Do we have a choice there?
Well, the, the way that, well, one thing, let me go back real quick to your just previous question so I can answer that fully. Under section five of the policy, section three, no, sorry, section five, if the selected invocation speaker does not appear at a scheduled meeting, the city council may elect to supplement with a moment of silence, so that's.
Can we change that to "shall," so there's no wiggle room there?
We can.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Does anybody else feel that the moment of silence kind of encompasses everything that we need at the moment? I feel like this is just going to be a logistical nightmare.
I don't think this is a logistical nightmare, I think once we get a schedule and a rotation going, it's one minute out of our proceedings and I think this is incredibly important.
So?
So I, I will preface my comments with this, I'm a devout Catholic and practicing Catholic, but I'm also very respectful of First Amendment and a constitutionalist. And my fears, I think that are probably felt by Councilman Klufis are that, right now, I think up here, there are members that have very good intentions with this, but as with a lot of things, the pendulum can always swing to the other side when you have other people making decisions. And I think with my fear based on the language as the policy is currently drafted, and not that it's drafted poorly in any way, shape, or form, it's drafted very well, is that there's a lack of, I think, definitiveness with regards to what can be done and how this could possibly be abused. So when we have words like "nonsecular" and "nonreligious," that's a slippery slope. That means that somebody can come to the podium and while they might not be able to blatantly disparage people based on these certain characteristics, it may not be in the best interest of the community to open it up and then if you don't open it up, you are violating the First Amendment. So I, I would love to have, and, and also keep in mind too, that invocation does not mean prayer, those words are not interchangeable. So while I would love to have a prayer before everything that I do, that's my personal belief and I don't know that we have the ability, we certainly don't have a crystal ball, we certainly can't make sure that this isn't abused in the future. And so, you know, I don't want to put this discussion to bed by any way, shape, in any way, shape, or form, but I would like to maybe see how we can work with maybe the city attorney to avoid something negative coming out of this in the future, that's just my fear at this moment.
So, Councilperson, that, again, my question to council is, if, if we have a, let's call it a neutral invocation, are we able to offer that out as what we would like, a, how are we calling the, the invocation givers?
Oh, invocation speakers.
Invocation speakers, are we able to offer them a, a neutral prayer to guide us?
Well, I, I think if, if we're talking about neutral, that's a very subjective term. So I think what, from what I'm hearing, Mayor, is that you want to provide more like an invocation, an opening statement for guidance and wisdom to proceed through the meeting with no, with no reference to any, you know, Christian references or any other religious references in it. So you, you could read a statement like that, sure, at the beginning of the meeting.
I'll, I'll share this with city council after they, after they have, everybody's given their comments. And I just want, I want to underscore the fact that the invocation is meant to address city council members. It's not meant to address the public at large or the visitors to the meeting, it's meant to address city council members to guide, to spiritually guide them and help them in their decision-making at these meetings, is that correct?
Yes, that's the history of.
That's the history of it, okay. Councilperson, comment?
So it's really not for the public that's here, it's just for the city council meter, members?
Yeah, historically, when blessings came before the legislature, it was to guide the legislature in their decision-making and their actions for the day, if we're going back, you know, historically, that's what's been the purpose.
Okay, that's understood, it's, I, I'm sitting here thinking, I, I've been to many, many ceremonies and events where they do an invocation and actually lately, what I have heard is like Councilman Klufis stated, is that we offer a moment of silence, either in recognition or remembrance, but in this case, so that we are guided properly as council members as we conduct this meeting. I think that with what the mayor has been doing, in my own opinion, is, I think that it's enough that we have that moment of silence for us, I don't know how it will affect the public that is here and how they would feel about it, but I would like to know how they would feel about that. Is a moment of silence enough or do we need to go further? And who should, who should it be offered by, should it still be offered by the mayor? Which, to me, I'm fine with that after the pledge, but I would like to hear what the public has to say about it.
Councilman?
I would also say, I mean, if it's exclusive for us, I have nothing against even doing a prayer circle before the meeting, you know, we can do it in the back if we want, I just feel like this is potentially going to open up the door for conflict and I also am a little, is there any way we could just have like a preferred public speaker? If we invite them and like give them preferential treatment to put them right in the front and then they get three minutes to have an invocation, I don't know if there's like a way that we just have precedent without actually having a resolution. I just am, I think, I think we share the same resolve around wanting to do the right thing, but just in the manner which is very, it's very moldable and malleable, like by design, with these definitions that are really hard to put a definition on, I think could potentially open up the can of worms that we talked about, but, I mean, the first thing I did this morning was I woke up and I thank God I feel better, so it's not like I have anything against invocation that has prayer, I just feel like we're going to open up the door for people who want to try to put our words against us and just create a leverage point for us.
Thank you for the comment, let me, if I may, let me just share this with you with the, with the idea that if, if the following words were acceptable, we could consider offering this to our, those that have volunteered to, to give an invocation, if they would be willing to state this. It says, "We gather here today with the intent of doing good work as the city council of Palm Coast. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us the task. We promise to leave all of our political differences outside and come together at our meetings as brothers and sisters for our community. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect to all. May our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all of our matters before us." So that's a neutral invocation, I've actually borrowed that from a local organization. We can alter it, change it, customize it, but would you all be willing to offer this up as what a volunteer would have?
I don't think we should be writing words for local religious leaders.
Okay.
I think they'll understand our rules, you know, and they will come here and they will express their feelings in their own words. That's why we would open this up to all religious beliefs and get different perspectives. I also don't think it's not just for us, it's for the community of Palm Coast. It's for the state of Florida, it's for this country, this country was founded on religion. It's in our pledge, it's on the back of our money, so I, I don't think there's a way to sort of just neutralize this or have a moment of silence. So I, I would like to proceed with this, I think we should be doing it at every meeting we have and if we don't have someone show up, then we can do the moment of silence to fill that void. But I have a feeling we're going to see a lot of our religious leaders in this community step forward and want to be a part of this.
Okay, so just let me, so Counselor, you're going to have to help me again with the, the history and the purpose of this. So I understand Vice Mayor Danko's concept of, the public that's here will be, you know, I guess in, with, not?
Invoked?
Yeah, they'll be invoked, well said, because they'll be here. You said before we can offer people a chance to, to stand away, but I'm, I'm not sure that that's practical or realistic. Again, why is it that we are thinking that this should be confined, that the message be directed to city council as opposed to all of those attending the meeting? I think, Counselor, Vice Mayor, that's what you're saying?
Well, I'm just saying if we have a religious leader who shows up, stands at the podium, does this one-minute invocation, everyone in the public who's here is going to hear it, anyone watching on YouTube is certainly going to hear it. So it is in a sense a community thing, which I don't see anything wrong with that.
Is there, I'm just asking a legal issue now, I don't want to?
I know that there's a legal question in there, so you asked me the history, that's where the history originally came from, but you're right, if somebody's doing it.
If you're watching C-SPAN, you're watching the opening of the House session.
Right, and they're doing it, yeah.
Obviously, it's for the members, you know, in the House of Representatives, but it's also for the folks watching, it's also for the folks that are sitting up in the balconies in the, you know, in, in that chamber who are listening too. And I think it's okay, you know, we do our pledge, you know, and then, you know, we remain standing and a minister approaches that microphone, if somebody wants to leave the room on their own, they're more than welcome to, if they want to sit down, they're certainly more than welcome to. I don't think, I don't think we need to say something like, "You can leave the room if you want," that's kind of silly. If you want to leave the room, leave the room. But this is a community thing, this is for Palm Coast, for Flagler County, it's not just for us, is my feeling on it.
So, so you're willing to, to break from history, which council says is okay?
Break, I, I don't understand what you mean by break.
Well, Counselor has told us twice that the history of the invocation with regard to municipalities is a focus on the members of the council or commission.
I think it's a combined sort of thing.
Well, that's not what council has told us, I'm just trying to understand that clearly.
The message is obviously offering us some guidance
Right.
from above, from God, on how we do our job.
Right.
But the community will hear that message and I think actually the community will have a lot more respect for us if we do that.
Okay, let's comment.
So I, I agree from a historical perspective, we have under God in our pledge, we have under God in our money and I, by, in no means ever want to see those go away. I, I think that if we think back, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, there was a prayer that was done or invocation where they ended it with a woman and I was incredibly offended by that. And I guess my, my concern is that we can't limit who steps to the podium. I don't want people to be offended in our community either by whoever decides to speak. So I, I think that, I liked what the mayor read, I do think that it could, we can work on perhaps having maybe a slightly more religious undertone for our community and something like that. I want to find the right balance while respecting both religious beliefs and also our constitution. So I would, I would like to work with the city attorney with you, Nasa, on kind of maybe some language in this and see if we can revisit this because I do think that it can be worked on so that we are making sure that we don't have the types of offensive things that we could possibly have. And I don't know that it can be done, but I, I want to avoid, I'm sorry, I don't ever want a prayer in this chamber to end with a woman, I, I don't, I don't want that.
And I appreciate that, but we can't dictate that.
And I know that, and so, and so that's, that is my honest, that's my honest concern. And I think that it's a concern that a lot of people probably would share. Do you, do those of us who want to start our meetings with a prayer and who believe in God, do they want a prayer to be ended in that way? I, I don't know that people do and so we, we're trying to make decisions up here for something that's very personal for a lot of people, when I think that perhaps the moment of silence allows people to personally do what they do. I know after every pledge, I, I take the moment of silence to pray and I do the sign of the cross because I am Catholic and I choose to do that and I'm not imposing that on anybody else while I do that. So I, I just, I understand Councilman Danko wanting to do the prayer, I do as well. I just want to preserve, I think, the, the personal beliefs of our community as a whole and make sure that nothing offensive comes before the chamber, that's all.
Well, I can, if I can just respond, so for example, just maybe last month in another city that I work for who has an invocation policy, you know, they are very good about rotating and getting every religious organization before them and there was a mosque, a Imam from a mosque that came in and, you know, praise Allah and that's how the invocation, it was, that was at the end, but most of it, you know, followed, it was all following the policy of, you know, leading the city council, blessing the city council members for, you know, and that's how it ended and the city got emails from people that were appalled that that occurred. The answer to that is, if you open the door, everyone's got to be allowed through the door.
Well, and to, and I appreciate that and to address the, the woman who came to the podium during public comment and said, "Well, I do want us to pray to God, but not to fake gods," I don't want to pray to fake gods either. And, and, but we can't limit that, we can't, because the policy as proposed says "community leader," it doesn't even say "chaplain." So if, if we are, if we are truly constrained? So if we are, if we are truly constrained in this manner, which I think that we are, I do think that we open the door to these other, these other things. And so, I just, it's something that I personally will think very hard on, because I know what I personally want. But it, I do, I do encourage our council members to remain open-minded and just look at the bigger picture of what this will mean for our community.
Thank you. So let me, let me just...
You said that we could change it to "community religious leaders," correct?
You could.
So it wouldn't just be "community leaders." Also, if this had a downside, didn't go well, we could revoke it at any time, correct?
Sure. And as I explained before, you know, this is, because of the restrictions in the policy, it's possible if someone were up doing their one-minute invocation and started to get into things that were more politically motivated or social, you know, something, some hot topic came up, then conceivably you would be able to say, "Hey, wait a minute, this is not..."
We could stop them.
Yeah, you gotta wait till public comment for that.
Yeah.
You gotta wait till public comment for that.
Exactly, exactly. But, but I think I have enough...
It's not part of our invocation.
No pun intended, Nick. I'm going to try to outdo you now. But I think I have enough faith in our community religious leaders, that this will go quite well for Palm Coast and this chamber.
So, so let me, let me kind of give you a wrap-up here, and I appreciate everybody's comments. So, let me just describe myself. So, I am very prayerful and pray many times during the day, because there are so many things in my life that I am either blessed with or feel obligated and or want or desire to give thanks for. So prayer is an integral part of every day of my life. I would also point to the fact that, just for reference purposes here, that in Washington, the Senate and the Congress both begin their sessions with prayer. I would point to Tallahassee and tell you that the Senate and the House also begin their meetings with a prayer. It's my understanding that Flagler County begins its county commission meetings with a prayer? No?
Moment of silence. I confirmed with Flagler County.
Well, I've, I know for a fact that commissioners have spoken and given prayers at the beginning of their meeting. Maybe it's not a regular thing, but it has occurred. So, I'm not looking just to follow suit, but I think it's important, since it's the same community members that go to county commission, and certainly our representatives and senators up in Tallahassee are, I consider them a part of the community. I, I think prayer is important. I like councillor, councillor Pontieri's idea. If she would volunteer to work with the city council, to author up a neutral prayer that encompasses the feeling of prayer, we would...
Talking about writing a prayer and handing in...
An invocation.
An invocation and then having someone just read it.
Asking, asking the religious leader or religious person if they would consider...
Tallahassee, do they do that?
I don't know. If they would...
I don't think any minister...
Okay, I don't know the, yeah, I don't know the answer.
...step forward and read something that we wrote.
Well, I don't know. I haven't asked...
I won't find that actually offensive, to be honest with you.
Because?
Because this is their job. This is their belief. This is what they do. They need to express it in their own words, not in something we just write a government-written prayer. I don't even know if that's legal.
I mean, you, you, we can't, the city can't issue a prayer and say, you know, this is, because that's promoting one religion over another, which is a blatant violation of the establishment.
So you feel, you feel the local clergy would be willing to support all religions within their city?
I think it's more of support of God. How, whatever their religious beliefs are, whether you're Muslim or Jewish or Catholic or Protestant,
Yeah.
it's all about God.
Well, not, not, not quite.
Well, what else would this be about?
That's the problem, councillor Mandenko, is you, we by law can't, can't say that it has to be about God. If we could, I don't, I don't, we would be disregarding the First Amendment. I mean, in my personal, would it be about God? And yours? Probably.
Yes, well, that's, that's what I mean. That's what I mean. But if you listen to what they do in the House of Representatives or Tallahassee, we're talking along those lines. It works quite well, and it sends that message to the community.
Well, I think, and I would, I would like to hear our city attorney, because I know she had something to say. I think that the undertone of an invocation that we can draft will, will have the undertone of...
But she just said we can't write an invocation.
She also didn't finish.
Oh, I said, I said, "You can't write a prayer." And what I said was, the what the mayor read was an invocation starting off the meeting wishing everybody well, wishing that they do their best and have the knowledge to proceed. That, to me, is more of a, just starting off the meeting on a right foot, like a pledge of what the city's going to do, what the citizens are going to do during the meeting.
What I'm gathering, and the mayor should correct me if I'm wrong, is he's saying, "We should write this invocation and then have religious readers read what we wrote." And I'm asking, can we do that or not?
Well, you could have, anybody could volunteer to read it
Right.
at the beginning. I mean, whether you're a religious leader or a member of the public or somebody else could come in.
Can we tell a religious leader, "You have to read what this city government wrote"?
Well, they would be volunteering.
Let me, let me correct you there. So my, my intent is to offer them the opportunity to use this. But if they felt it, that they had to speak from their own words, that would be okay. I just wanted, by offering this, okay, offering the opportunity to use this, they understand what we're looking for. Now, they may choose to use their own words, and I would be, I would accept that. Because, just so I'm clear, I don't want any confusion here, because this is a workshop. So when we get to business meeting and vote, I, I value prayer. I, I, I appreciate the fact that city council would be the, the focus of a prayer to guide us, to help us in our decision making at, at these meetings. So I want to be clear on how I feel about it.
I have no objection to us offering up an example
Right.
as we, as we gather up...
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could offer it as an example of, here's something that would be appropriate because it's very, you know, doesn't have any of these trying to get you to come to my religion, you know, those things that we're trying to...
And it's not...
And we could even say, if you'd like to use our example...
And it's not this way or the highway, but they'll understand our message and our intent.
I think that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, it could be offered as that. It could be offered as a pledge by the city council that they make at the beginning of their meetings for them and the citizens. Like, there's a lot of ways that it can be provided, but saying, "Hey, this is our prayer. You have to use it." That would be a no-no. Can I, can I offer...
And, you know, I would also say that if anyone is ever offended at, at one city council meeting by the invocation, well, go on social media. You'll be offended every second you're on it.
Councillor Clufus, I feel I utilize the moment of silence, you know, with great respect. It's very, very important to me. I'm certainly willing to trade the moment of silence for the procedure that we're talking about. I think I can accomplish, and again, I can only speak for myself, accomplish my, my needs through that. I do understand it is a complication and an effort that we are going to direct the staff to, just like any other event, to organize and make it happen. But are you comfortable that if we change out the two, if we don't get somebody to appear, we would do the moment of silence?
Yeah, and I think the moment of silence, in my opinion, encompasses everything. And I don't know about a straight trade for the moment of silence for the prayer. No draft picks or anything like that, just...
No, it's if, if there's a no-show. If, if the entire clergy is benched,
Gotcha.
then we would go to moment of silence.
And I would say, yeah, the moment of silence to me, and I do the same thing. I compose myself, and I just, I pray for the water utility, parks and recreation. Let's see back there, Steve. Our fire department, our first responders, just to keep our community safe and also us safe up here too, because you never know what's going to happen in these meetings. And the moment of silence to me is something where we can all take a deep breath and almost become calm. And I also, I'm going to be blatantly honest with you, I kind of fear that we're going to piss somebody off who is going to be a religious person and, you know, might get us into a bit of a kerfuffle. But I digress. I think the moment of silence, definitely if no one shows up for the other option that we were talking about, that, that seems completely reasonable to me.
Okay. And we're also making an assumption that the, and I'll just use the word, well, religious leader, that this doesn't interfere with their, with their schedule. I mean, they're, they're very busy folks as well. So we've got a couple of assumptions here that we will get, you know, a large list. I don't know the answer to that. We'll have to wait and see. So, from my perspective, as one city council member, based on the conversation I'm hearing, and the next, councillor Pontieri, you'll, you'll speak to city council in terms of wording?
You mean the city attorney. I just want to be very clear, so we're not, we're not unknowingly violating such a...
No, no, no.
Yes, of course, I'll speak to the city attorney.
So, if you could bring that back at the next business meeting, I think we could get through that to a vote and move forward. Is that okay with everyone?
I did have one question from a legal standpoint. You said something about sending out an invitation to all congregations. Are we potentially setting ourselves up to violate something if we inadvertently miss somebody?
Or we exclude someone?
Right.
Like, are we...
It's going to be on the website too.
Problem here.
So I'm wondering if we just post it on the website rather than sending out an invitation, only because I don't want to see us inadvertently get ourselves in a vice?
We can, we can do that. Yeah, we can do it either way.
You just said we wouldn't be getting ourselves in a bind if we missed somebody accidentally. That's what we just said, right?
I did say that, right.
Yeah, so if, if we're not going to get ourselves into a legal bind, I think it's helpful for Virginia or whoever you assign to put together that list and reach out.
So the only, the only, if I may, just for a second, city manager, the only thing I'm thinking, that, that's an operational issue. I think we have to rely on staff to, to promote, advertise, and do it correctly. I think that, that falls a little bit outside of our, we'll give direction, and the direction might be that we make sure that everybody that could be eligible is, is announced too. I think that would take care of it. But we need to let staff take charge, because they are the ones, you're supplying the vision, and let staff take care of the operation. I have great confidence in staff to be able to handle that.
Yeah, we don't need to micromanage.
No, okay, exactly.
And do you want, I mean, do you want staff to come back with, you know, obviously because this will take city clerk staff time, between organizing, lining up every speaker for every meeting,
Yep.
coordinating with them, providing them with the policy? Do you want an analysis of the staff time involved for this?
Well, I, I'm not sure, that's, well, I'm not, I'm not looking for, but I'll yield to you all. More importantly is, you know, when would we be able to start this? That would be an indication of the staff time as well, because you can't start it at the next meeting, because you'll never have time to get everybody out there. So it would be good for staff to come back to us and tell us when, when they would be comfortable that we actually begin this. Give us a date that makes sense. You know, is it, is it a month from now? Is it three months? I don't know.
Implementation date.
Because remember, you're, you're going to be asking folks to change their schedules for us. You got to give ample time. Sixty days or ninety days is usually appropriate.
Being cut back with the implementation date.
Okay. So, do you have enough information to proceed? Enough direction from the city council?
I believe so.
Very good. Any other weigh-ins on this? I, I think it's an important question, and I'd like to make sure. Here's what I'm looking for. I'd like to have a unanimous decision on something at this magnitude. I think it's very important. So that's why we want to flush out all of the questions and be sensitive to everybody's comments and ideas, and try to bind them together so that we move forward as one city council.
And I might remind everyone on council, can at any time pick up the phone and give you a call
Sure.
and discuss this. I have discussed this several times with you already. So if you, councillor Pontieri wants to discuss this, I mean, just pick up the phone and have a call.
Right, and I'll just...
Don't need our, our guidance on that. You're entitled to do that.
And I just want to thank my fellow councilwomen and councilmen for this discussion. I think it's been respectful and very honest, and I greatly appreciate that from all of you. And I think that this is how we govern the right way. So I just wanted to exhibit that appreciation.
All right.
I just have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
Really quick. I know you want this by the next meeting. I am on vacation from Wednesday till Monday. The next meeting's Tuesday. So I'm wondering if we could move this to the business meeting?